There it is.
All right, welcome everybody to the June 2nd Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's any conflicts of interest, somebody can disclose it when we get to that. If not, I'll entertain a motion to enter into an executive session.
Make a motion.
Hold on, sorry Joe. Oh geez, yep, 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 sorry. I did jump right over that. Almost made you wait a little bit there Rich, but Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is the dedication of the field that I'd like to read that aloud to our guests this evening. Richard Brown was born on February 8th, 1956 in Shirley, Massachusetts. The parents, George and Cecilia Brown. The family moved to Emerson, New Jersey where Richard and his brother attended both elementary and high school. While there, Richard was a member of the chess club, math club, and the library audiovisual unit. He was an avid reader, particularly science fiction. Richard enjoyed Star Trek, having attended the first Star Trek convention in New York City in the early 1970s. In the late 1960s, the family took an interest in camping with their first trip to Maine, 1969. They went 13 miles by boat to camp at Half Moon Cove on Upper Richardson Lake. Following the return trips to camp in the region, the family had the opportunity to purchase something campground in 1974. Richard, having just graduated, helped with the daily operations of the campground. The family purchased the home in Acquahs in 1976 and became full-time residents. They eventually sold the campground and started the family business Mountain Wake Services, which provided a variety of services from camp maintenance to computer work. Richard's computer work brought opportunity with Trine, am I saying that right?
Trine.
Trine, where he helped fix and upgrade computers. The camp maintenance work included splitting wood and cutting ice at Ball Mountain Camps. And there's a photo of him at the bottom of the page there, cutting ice. Richard's mother opened Seale's Bakery at Haynes Landing where Richard would make deliveries to gingerbread house, acoustic grocery, and others. The brothers would also sell pizza from bakery in the evenings. Town ranger hired Richard in 1992 as a siege general, part-time attendant at the transfer station. By 1994, he worked his way to being a full-time employee. In 2000, Richard was awarded the Main State Operator of the Year Award and promoted to the transfer station manager where he remains today. In 2024, Richard celebrated 30 years as full-time employee in the town, where he has always shown exemplary performance. He has done whatever is necessary to provide best service to the citizens and visitors of Rangeton, Acquahs. His service has been consistently pleasant, helpful, professional, and reliable. It's not often that an individual dedicates 30 years of their life to serving their community. That is exactly what Richard has done for us. It's with gratitude and admiration that the 2024, even 2014, is dedicated to Richard Brown in recognition of his unwavering civil service to the town's citizens and visitors. Thank you, Richard. Have a quick photo.
Yep. Come right back.
From center.
Get a good one.
Oh yeah. I have a short one.
I do miss you. Come right up.
Make you feel shorter, bye.
God. All right, very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you so much.
All right, sir. Congratulations.
See you Saturday.
I'll get you later.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to enter an executive session.
Make a motion to enter into executive session, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 40568, consultation with legal.
Second motion from Sam, second from Jake, all in favor? So moved. Just give us a few moments, folks, and we'll be right back into the meeting.
Yeah, you guys have to vacate for this just for...
Thanks, Rich, again. Congrats, my friend.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
I'll see you tomorrow at work. Bring my trash out.
No, I know.
Tracy, can you stop on the floor, please? So what can I do right now? Something everybody see us, but we can't see them.
I think so.
I thought like the Wizard of Oz was talking to us.
I know, right? Pay no attention to the man behind me.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Jimmy.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
I'm Richard Brown's, Richard Brown's brother. I just let him into the meeting. Somebody want to bring him up to speed?
Bob?
Bob, how you doing, Bob?
Yeah.
Well, I'm proud. Rich, Rich has, has left. We, we read the, I read the dedication to him, which he thought was very nice. And I want to thank you for your help in putting that together. He was surprised. Told him before the meeting that we had worked with you on that, so we want to thank you for your help.
He might be muted.
He might be muted. Thank you, Bob.
All right. Welcome back, everybody.
Okay, well, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a consent agreement between the town of Rangeton and Moise Real Estate Agency.
Second.
Motion with Sam, second from Keith, all in favor?
Discussion?
Yeah.
Wasn't there something, one other piece you wanted? Specificity? Didn't you say?
Steve putting that into the paperwork.
You put it in, and then I'll, I'll look for it before I sign it.
Okay.
Add addition.
Yes. All right.
Sorry, didn't try to...
No, that's fine, that's fine. All in favor? All right, so move. Public to speak on a non-agenda item. Mr. Borger.
Mr. Borger, I noticed in the town manager notes under Section 12, Town Manager Report, about the discussion of the April 8 election. But I didn't see. It listed under the, under Article 12. So I just had a short thing to say, and I didn't know if I'd get it, if it was going to be discussed under Item 12, or if I would need to...
No, technically, it's non-agenda item, so, yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay. So. In the town manager's update, I think you focused there, in the discussion on that, he said specifically, there were no issues with absentee ballot. And I, in my oral commentary at your previous meeting, I said I thought there were some issues with it. And so, obviously, he disagrees with me, and that's, I'm good with that. But I'd like to be on record saying that I'm confident that there were some issues with the process, the absentee ballot process, of the ballot itself. I didn't know just how to interpret this thing, so that's all I'd like to say.
On record, do you have any, any evidence or anything to, to present, to prove your case, or?
Yeah. One of the things was that I went and watched the counting of the ballots that evening, and they didn't deal with any absentee ballots at that time. I got thinking about that later, so. I came in the next morning, and I asked the town clerk, I said, "How did you handle the absentee ballots?" And she told me that throughout the course of the day, they processed. And the posting was that they were going to be done at 2:00 on the day of the election thing. So they weren't done at 2:00. They were done randomly throughout the day. And so, I think that's an issue. And just wanted to just bring that up.
All right, you are on record. Thank you. Down to boards and committees, we've got some minutes from different boards. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, did say.
This is not one of your big issues, but I think we need another sign at the Haley Pond Park. And I have a store across the street, so I walk around it now. It's not a big deal, but it's a resource that the town has that a lot of people, first of all, don't know about. And I believe the town built that ramp that you can bring kayaks and canoes down. Almost nobody knows about it unless you're local. So some highlighting of that might be helpful. I originally thought a sign that said pond access would be useful, but I understand there are issues with, you don't want to invite people with power boats and things. So I thought about it, and I think a good way to do, and the other issue is, so one issue is letting people know about it because it's a great resource. The other issue is people park there and block the access routinely when it's crowded. And, you know, Pond Street is chaotic as it is. I have a private parking lot with the condo in the back. People are always parking there. We kind of all live with it, but if you park in front of the path, then people can't drive their cars down to the pond, which they do. I have a picture of one person doing it today, using it. So it's a really useful thing to have. So my suggestion is to get away from worrying about pond access. A sign that said park access, do not block, would be probably ideal. The other solution is no parking, but then you have, where is a no parking? You'd have to have two signs, no parking between signs, just a little path. And I don't think that's be that crazy, but I do think a sign would help for those two reasons. And I know it's under evaluation already, but I want to just highlight that.
Yep, we did discuss that quite a while ago, and I, I'll be truthful, I think it fell through the cracks. Sam brought it to my attention a couple of weeks ago, and we, we did mention it here, and Joe's working to address that, so, but thanks for coming to talk. Sure. Mark?
On the subject of signs, I know you taught at the, in the last year, early this year, you spoke about the crosswalks and signs on those. And in Tomington this past week, I noticed where that guy got run over in front of their post office there. They put in, up one of those fluorescent green signs, like those construction workers, with an arrow pointing down, you know, a pedestrian crossing icon with the arrow pointing down to the crosswalk. And I just thought that was a pretty effective way to let motorists know there's a crosswalk there. Because there's times when our crosswalks aren't visible, and people are stepping out between vehicles in front of cars and things. And just for an example, back towards Christmas time, when they were given the horse and wagon rides and things like that, I was down there and we finished. And I was up in front of the crosswalk, like crossroads, Gallegian Savings Bank in the corner of our, and I'm standing in the crosswalk, and this guy with this big SUV pulls up, and he starts giving me a dirty look like he wanted to pop there. And he puts it down, and I said, "This is a crosswalk." And he said, "And there was a light snow on it, and there was no way of..."
Sure.
"No way." And I didn't blame the guy, I just smiled with, and, but I think something like that would be, and I, because I noticed this, I got thinking about it, because this week, the MDOT is all up and down, we fall between Acquahs and Rangeton. Putting up all new signs for the corners and all other types of things, and I didn't know if this was something that you could talk to them about, or if it's a separate issue, or what it is. It just seems like a fantastic solution that wouldn't be cost a ton of money. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, jump back down into the minutes. We've got minutes from Park Commission, Airport Planning Board, and then we've got our regular minutes from on May 19.
Our May 19 regular Board of Selectmen's Meeting.
Motion from Sam, second from Keith, any discussion? All in favor? So moved. All right, down to consent items. We have church in the park by the Baptist Church.
Church in the park happening July 20th, pending Parks Commission.
Second.
Motion from Sam, second by Ethan or Jake, any discussion? All in favor? So moved. All right, we have an appointment for the Haley Pond Committee, first one.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Allison Fraser for the Haley Pond Ad-Pod Committee. Is there an expiration that needs to be on that, or term, term thing, a year?
Their term is one year.
I thought that, I read that somewhere, yeah.
Sir, one, one year expires 2026.
Motion from Sam, second from Keith, any other discussion? All in favor? So moved. All right, inter-local agreement, the flex size tax.
The town manager signed the agreement, inter-local agreement, flex size tax from Dallas and Rangeton.
Motion from Sam.
Second.
Second from Jake, any discussion? Mark?
Yep, I was wondering if the criteria of the cooperative agreement, if that could include the Fridays that Rangeton's town offices close as well. Right now, my son was up this past year, and his registration was expired or was about to expire. And it was a Friday, and both Dallas Plantation Town Office and Sandy River Town Office said it didn't meet what's in here, so.
Isn't that reciprocal?
Well, the intent, Mr. Chair, the intent of it is spelled out in that document. Mentioned other training inventory issues, time off, scheduled time off, so forth. It's not intended to cover day when the town office is closed by schedule.
It would be convenient if they could do without these town offices closing. You know, people tell you, you don't go online, but tell you, there's no picnic going online high enough, register of the vehicle. It's not as simple as you might wish.
So I agree at this point, Mr. Borger, I think there's some huge merits to that, that are valued, that's something we could look at. An amendment to that agreement, or is there a way to, I mean, it is, I heard a lot of scowl button, inconvenience of that, loss of a day, people take care of things, especially in the idea of bodies and long, people care to register other equipment. I know there's online opportunities, but I think it's got some value to it. At least look at it.
No, I think it's a good idea, but what's, Joe?
We can ask.
They have to agree to it.
They would have to agree to it. I'm not sure, the spirit of this is to cover sickness, family emergencies, workshops, bereavement, vacations, or hardware or inventory issues. It doesn't cover differences in schedule.
Can we, can we vote this in, and maybe have that discussion and amend it, if, if that's something we can do, or?
Certainly can talk to them about it.
Yeah, I mean, they might say no, yeah, right.
It may give some idea of the actual volume of folks that, you know, need to have a ton on that day, if they're going to the other places, if we could track.
Yeah, I mean, that would kind of help identify a need to, to readjust a schedule or something, maybe.
Do we want to vote this in? Guys comfortable with that, and we can reach out to the plantations? What's your flavor? That works. All right, so we got a motion from Sam and a second by Jake, I believe.
Yep.
All in favor? So moved. Comprehensive plan.
Two items here, Mr. Chair, both active items. First is action, recommended action by the board to authorize chairman to sign this. Middle form, I have country law. You may see it out there, the folks that review comprehensive plans. So when we set up the timeline for this, we call the public hearing. And right away, we also sent that draft that we had, and it stayed that it was in to the, to the state for review. In order for them to officially review it, they need authorization from the chief officials that we are actually requesting them to do it. They have actually started this last week, last week, as a very good idea to be in favor of it, but for some reason, you know, if you're not in favor, you go against it, then I'll let them know that they need to authorize the review. So anyway, this is formal authorization from the chief official authorizing VACF to review our draft comprehensive plan. I recommend authorizing the chair to sign it, and then I will...
So moved.
Second.
I'll ask the chair of CIC to be questioned.
Motion by Sam, second by Ethan, any other discussion? All in favor? So moved, all right. And then approval for public mailer.
In, right behind that document in your package, there are four pages of information. It will not go out the door like this, it will be folded up, and then one page, how do I say that, a doctor? I could figure out, raw stuff, and not make a mess, so.
Fold it up like what?
It'll be a tri-hole, 11 by 17, so all that information will be on.
Yes, I was seeing how this one was.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So this is really for content, the, I talked to the chair of the election, Chairman Janassian, I spoke with the chair of the comprehensive planning committee on the phone last week, and he asked to make sure whether you were okay with this information. And if you are, go ahead and bless it, and then we'll get it out the door.
Make a motion to approve the public hearing, mailer.
Second. Sam, second by Keith, any other discussion? All in favor? So moved. All right, down to old business. Didn't have any update on the, the highway truck, right?
Don't have any offers for trade-in values yet. The, I did speak with O'Connor, I emailed their bid for that new truck, expired on the 27th, which was in the, the information. That's, that's just an update there. I did still ask for the trade-in value, and Pat asked for a trade-in value from, from heights, so we're working on getting that back to you. We'll bring it back for next meeting. In the meantime, we're trying to dress that up and make it look very presentable.
Steve, do you foresee any issue with the expiration of the?
So there's, that just means we can't get a 25 anymore, and we have to order for 26. The other dealership is, in their bid, they're willing to search around for a 25 somewhere else. O'Connor seemed, it seemed to be that, you know, they were going to order it, and if we didn't make the cutoff, then that was a chance to get a 25. Seemed like they were willing to order a 26. They also had a DOT state bid GMC, but it wasn't completely compliant with the spec, or didn't meet all the items that we specked out. So that's another option, I guess.
Can we, can we see that option?
Sure.
I'd like to, I don't know, I'd be curious.
Yeah, I can bring that back.
And then obviously, at that same breath, I mean, I'd like to see the option, but would the operator of that vehicle, primary operator, be comfortable with that vehicle?
The, the preference of the person that's going to get this as a side vehicle is the Chevy from, from mine. I don't think it matches to the mine. It's the Chevy that meets all the requirements, and this, this is preference, okay? So I'll bring back more information.
Perfect. And then the Community Resilience Partnership, AVCOG, enroll in that?
Yeah, AVCOG has reached out to see if we're interested in re-enrolling in two years after re-roll program. We had public hearing, went through the questionnaire, this is there a couple of years ago now, and then ultimately, we were eligible to apply for grants. We did apply to the heat of grant. Highway Garage, it was $50,000 grant. So I don't think there's any, there's no cost to apply. If you're interested in applying, I can fill out this, this work paperwork, bring you back the next meeting, just want to make sure you're interested in, in going through that. You really will be talking about resilience objectives, you know, how are we going to be responding to natural disasters and climate change and those type of things? Which we've been through it once, I can bring those answers back and then talk about what's changed since then. If you're interested, I'll bring back with me.
Yeah, so we're not on the hook for anything, but it just gives us the ability to possibly get grants.
Yes, and the latest, the latest round of grants either just opened, or it's just about to open, and will be due sometime in August. So it's rolling, you know, enrollment, you can enroll whenever you prefer. Just the deadlines happen twice a year, so.
All right, perfect. So we'll see that next time. We got RFP for the cleaning contract.
As we resolve, this went back out, so we have two submissions. Results of those submissions, both are folks that have experience. I do recommend the low bidder provide mobile DTR.
So moved.
Motion from Sam, second by Keith, any other discussion? Mr. Jake, oh, sorry. All in favor? All right, so moved. Any correspondence come in or anything there? Let's get rid of the record. Down to Town Manager Report.
Biggest name, Mr. Chair, in the calendar is town meeting referendum vote is June 10th, that is a week from tomorrow. Close open today, close today. In this room, absentee ballots are available currently. You can pick those up till the end of the week. You can draw those off until 8:00 PM on the 10th. If you have any questions about voting, or any of that, not necessarily how to vote, but the procedure of how to vote, we can, we can help folks with that. Comp plan is June 18th, and then of course, we have a special town meeting scheduled for the fall to talk about the comp plan, the signs and lighting. In your materials under other business, there's a service grant CD, GT application package for Child Care Center. This will be for tuition assistance for qualifying parents. Your public hearing on that is two weeks from today, and I wanted you to have that at the head of time. There's a specific posting that has to go up, which I'm going to write out for that. Another update on the legislature, non-water dependent floating structures, they did have another work session on the 28th, shortly after Friday. Deliberation, they didn't vote. Wasn't, it was unanimous, for those present, there were two people absent, was unanimous to, ought to pass. It had an emergency provision attached to it by Bill Virgiro from Augusta, who said they recommend it take effect immediately as opposed to in the fall. Now, that's not the final vote, it's got to go before the House now for, for them to vote on. But it, it was unanimous to, to, so what that does is, it's a prohibition, as written, and any House vote that was, can prove that they were in place Friday, January 1st of this year will be grandfathered, so that's where they spent a lot of their time. They, they have to have a submerged land lease. And the director of submerged lands was there to answer questions, and it took a long, long time. The easiest way for me to understand, you know, the process, and he gave this example, he said, "The state has hundreds of thousands of public lands, and we don't allow folks to help their two-by-fours fly with, put camps up on those." You know, we have hundreds of thousands of acres of public water, which we also oversee, we're not going to let them do that there either. So that's kind of irrational, making everybody see it, so. It's not why yet, but it's, it's heading that way to the, for a vote, I can't, obviously, we can't rate. That's the update on that. Comp plan map tendencies are included, there's no actual wire there, just one app box that we love, we have, so. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Oh, yeah, my notes are good to talk about, Haley Pond sites, I tend to agree, I talked about Chief Kittingman, and Director, something that, that says do not block entrance is probably suitable there, and it's enforceable under the ordinance. I say, so it's kind of a way, we're, we're must have bored Jacks, but that's kind of what we're talking about, do not block entrance, something to that effect.
I don't object to that, but being one that's had an accident in that driveway before, it's pretty tight, and I think once, you know, I, I'm optimistic that Mr. Owner of the old idea.
Oh, I don't know who.
Can members like.
Oh.
Right in my head right now, I'm optimistic that his plan comes to fruition, obviously, the, that building gets adapted and to the lot size, and obviously, the projection of, of that pond becomes seen through the building. But the point being is, we have one parking stall, I think, in front of that gazebo, with one technical spot, right? And then people obviously park all openly, send it to the corner of the house, which I just wonder how, is there any kind of liability if somebody pulls out of there? And it's that operator at that point, right? So if they back in, or pull in, hit said car, X, Y, and Z, or whatever, one. And then I guess I'm curious about other portages, some of, some are carry-ins, carry-out, right? So, I mean, we need to have vehicle access to the ramp? So, I mean, we need to have, like, vehicle access to the ramp, or are we looking just to have a park, like, the, the park there unload and put it into the wash?
I, very good question, Mr. Chair, and we talked about this internally. I, I think, my feeling on it is it's, it's a carry-in, carry-out. Um, and there's really no expectation, as far as I can see, that people are going to have a back trailer in there. It's, you can carry it in, get as close as you can, um, and not park there and, and make it more difficult for other people to carry things in and out. That's kind of the way I see it. It's not really no parking, posting, it's a do not walk.
Loading zone.
Yeah, so.
And I just, I've seen people back cars down there, downloading kayaks. I'm just curious what our intention, full time, because I know you can't, obviously you can't park and block that portage, but just obstacle wise, I. Operator, let's get paid attention at that point, I'm just curious.
When that park went in, I remember Rudy being, the fire chief wanted that access. Also, we wanted to put a dry hydrant in there. I don't know if they have it yet, but they want to be able to, to access their, for water if they needed to run a tanker down there or something.
There's no dry hydrant present, but it is a, a place where, you know, if we had to, we'd get a, a shuttle truck in there.
That was a big, that was a big concern when it went in, making sure that was open for emergency vehicles.
Um, only question would be. Signing to placement, obviously you're going to be there, but Greg also mentioned, I think, the idea of kind of promoting the, the facility. And we know that it's already difficult to come, you can't like put anything at the end of the road because of the fact that it's already like difficult to see traffic one way or the other. So I'm just curious how he would, how can we help promote that property from Main Street at that location? I want, just a thought. Not looking for an answer, just.
Yeah, I'm not sure, it's out of my head, but I, I picked up on that too and we'll talk about that with my folks and see, see what we come up with.
Yeah, there's like a banner in the corner higher up that kind of shows that arrow to board it, like boat portage.
At the corner.
Yeah.
I mean, we see it jump in the air away from yet, that line of sight for vehicles falling in and out.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Does that ramp consist of? Uh, is it like a ramp ramp, like a boat?
Yeah, just a dirt shale. It's a, it's a nice gradual ramp into the water and has, you know, has rock walls on the side.
Probably don't want vehicles going down it now, because you're going to have the one guy that backs his truck. Yeah. In.
No.
And disrupts. Somebody will try it.
No, because there's, there, there are benches and walkways and flowers and.
So you can't, okay.
I mean, and there's like, oh, so you could.
People have done it, but it's not.
It, it is definitely possible, I've seen people.
But it should be specified, carry in, carry out.
I, I agree.
Carry in boat.
So are you, I mean, with all that, is, is it still going to, is it going to be in, uh, no parking or this only kind of stuff? Cause then, then it becomes enforceable by the police.
And that's something.
Cause you're not going to keep.
Unloading.
Even with a sign there, you're not going to keep people from parking there. I mean, especially after hours where it really doesn't matter, but, but if it says no parking, if it's after hours, you're not supposed to park there. I don't know.
That's agreed, that's a, can be a tough one for.
Yeah, so we have a, a section of the ordinance that Chief pointed out, traffic ordinance, uh, under section thirty-five, two, six. States no person shall park a vehicle within ten feet of any entrance to an alley, fire lane, or drive, or drive in the business district of the town of Ranji. So that's, that's the. Performance that you would rely on, uh, to just put something up and say.
We just wanted to make sure there was something, but.
He was, that was my first concern with this, was we go, whatever we do isn't enforceable, which is why I asked, asked him to look at it for us. So we'll, we'll continue in that direction. Uh, I'll work on these internally. Would you like to report back in a couple of weeks?
Yeah, I'd like to know what's going on, sure, yeah.
Would you like the park commission to be, be on that also?
Sure.
So the, our next meeting, the sixteenth, we're having the public meeting, did we set that at five for that C B D G?
Yes.
E D B G? It was a five, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought. June sixteenth, five P M. Um, all right, so we're down there, down, anybody have any, uh, select board communication? They want to bend forward. Nothing there? That magical hour.
I just, like, I could look in, nothing on our brain, but I, I thought my head, like, the, uh, efforts from Consolidated, moving those poles and making some effort, looking to get those screens.
Yeah.
On Main Street, and I have a, like, road and everywhere else I've seen it, so, thank you.
Well, that's that along. I, I haven't done an inventory yet to know exactly what's left. I think there's a couple left.
On Main Street, I think, still.
Yeah, and I want to thank, I want to thank our highway crew, our public works crew for helping out, filling in some of those, those holes there, uh, that we've got left behind, so. Yep.
Excellent. And then a motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Sam, second by Ethan, all in favor? So moved. You want to move back then?
Uh, you can leave when I'm, if I'm ready.
Rich didn't stay around for the signing.
I'll just sign my copy if I want.